Quickly, too. Just right here in front of me.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the city council meeting to order Monday, September 17, 2012 at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham Mejia?
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Protempo?
Present.
Mayor Edgar?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Kusamoto and stay standing for the invocation.
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, we just pray for your guidance this evening and your wisdom. Lord, we pray that you bless our city and you bless all the folks in keeping us safe. Lord, I pray that you put your hand on the world as we see a lot of things that are going on around the world and we just pray that we'll have peace and that we'll be able to rise above the things that are starting to happen. Lord, we just pray that you bless all these people in the chamber, all the people in the city and our city staff. In your name we pray, amen.
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 Are we going now for our presentation?
Yeah. Why don't you guys?
That's what I was asking everyone.
All right. First off this evening, I'm going to be providing a presentation and I'm going to ask that Chief Madder joins us up here.
How are you doing tonight, Chief?
Doing great.
Good. Tonight, we're going to be making a presentation or proclamation to Chief Madder proclaiming September 2012 as National Preparedness Month. I'll go ahead and read this a little bit. I won't go through every part of it, but National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every community member in the City of Los Alamos to prepare their homes, their business, or any type of emergency from natural disasters to potential terrorist attack. The community members in Los Alamos should prepare themselves to be self-sufficient for at least three days following a natural or man-made disaster. Investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our family, businesses, communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation caused by disasters. The City of Los Alamos is part of West County Emergency Response Team, or CERT, with community members who are trained to respond to and assist in disasters. The City of Los Alamos is working to increase public awareness about disaster preparedness by encouraging community members to make a plan, to get a kit, and to stay informed. The City of Los Alamos is getting prepared together and asking every community member to make preparedness a priority by taking the necessary steps to ensure that you and your family are prepared for a disaster. I, Troy Edgar, the mayor of the City of Los Alamos, on behalf of the city council hereby proclaim September 2012 as Disaster Preparedness Month, and we'd like to give this proclamation to Chief Madder.
You know, I'd just like to take this time to mention that National Preparedness Month is all about reminding the community the importance of being prepared for an emergency. And if the community is looking for any kind of emergency preparedness tips, they can find them on our website, losalamospolice.org. And I'd also like to take this time to let the community know that it's not too late to sign up for our next CERT presentation, which actually starts this weekend on Friday, but there is still space available and you can get information on that on our website as well.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Next up, I'd like to ask Matt Herrick from Southland Credit Union. This is Matt Herrick, Vice President of Southland Credit Union, Sales and Marketing, and he is up here because we're going to be presenting him with a certificate also. This is a certificate of appreciation for the money donated to the city to equip the staff with the emergency staff response go-kits. And I think we have a go-kit back here. We wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to recognize Southland's donation because they've been a committed partner to this process, not only in emergency preparedness, but their continued participation in the many donations that have enhanced our community. And for everybody kind of off the script here, the Southland Credit Union has been a great member, a great partner in our community, you know, outside of flying that beautiful flag on the side of their building during every national holiday. This is a group that at their race on the base, they're one of our biggest supporters out there, every community event. And I know from the city council, none of us can say enough good things about Southland Credit Union, so I just wanted to thank you. And what I'd like to do is, on behalf of the city council of Los Alamos, as the mayor, I'd like to provide you with a certificate of recognition. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to thank Mayor Edgar and the council members for this great recognition on behalf of Southland Credit Union. And just add that one of our core values at the credit union is to give back to the communities that we serve. And the City of Los Alamos is really special to us because it's where our corporate office has been since 2002. So we appreciate the opportunity the police department has given us in the city to be a partner in preparedness. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we're going to go ahead and move to oral communication. So I have a couple speaker cards here. I seen Rob Philman out there. Rob, do you'd like to go first?
I'd go first.
How are you doing, Rob?
Oh, hey, Rob. Can I ask you a question? I did notice that you're on for subject 9E. Did you want to wait for that one? Out of respect, I'd...
Have you guys changed the way that protocol is these days?
Let's see here. Well, you're more than welcome to go either way. It's up to you.
Mayor, maybe since we have some people from the audience that want to speak on that, can we move 9 to...is it 9A? Let me look.
9E.
9E to the first item on the agenda so these people can get on with the business of their lives?
Yeah. Yeah, you know what I'd like to do, Jerry, is I'd like to just go through the warrants and the consent, and then I'll move that up and we'll just take it right away, right after that. So we'll go 9A. Instead of 9A, I'll put E in there.
Okay, so I'll wait until you're done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like all of these are for 9E.
Yeah, I just thought it might save us some time.
Okay. Anybody else like to go through public comment at this point?
I should be short and sweet. I just wanted to extend my appreciation, if I get through this, to all of you for...I'm sorry, for reappointing me to the Personnel Appeals Commission in my absence. Fortunately, somebody communicated to you that my father had passed away the day before, and you were not first on my mind. But I did want to just thank you for your vote of confidence and your faith in me as a position I've served and allow me to continue to serve. The city means a lot to me, so anyway, that's all. Thank you.
You're very welcome. You know, we are glad we had an opportunity to do that, Kathy. You do a great job on our commissions. We really appreciate it. Good evening.
First, council, Happy New Year. It's kind of funny seeing the God we trust on the wall, remembering the debate and knowing that the city council scheduled a meeting on a night when most Jewish members of the community would be spending it with their family after a long day in temple. I'm sure you'll plan an important meeting for dinnertime on Good Friday next year. Oh, the hypocrisy. You know what I love about the solid waste franchise agreement that Mr. Edgar and the majority voted twice for? It's the gift that keeps on giving. Tonight, I would like to look at Section 8.05. This is the section that Mr. Edgar used to balance the holes in our budget with. This section says that CDS will guarantee $75,000 in sales tax to the city. That means they will be paying sales and use taxes on $7.5 million of sales and use. But as you read on, it says that they will pay their sales and use tax to the Board of Equalization. Then the Board of Equalization will send the City of Los Alamos their portion, and if it is less than the $75,000, CDS will then pay the city to make up the difference. Well, that portion that makes up the difference is not a sales and use tax, since only the Board of Equalization can collect and disburse sales and use taxes in California. This leaves the question of what is that difference paid directly to the city from CDS? Is it a tax? If so, did the City of Los Alamos create a new tax in this contract that was not voted on by the people? Because the money being used to pay this difference is coming from all the ratepayers of the trash collection. This would be a violation of Prop. 218, and I can't see the city attorney allowing the city to create a new tax on the people if she's competent. And since the law firm is still employed over two years after the contract was made as the city attorney, the city council must feel she is competent. So if the city is collecting this large sum of money, and it's not sales and use tax, and it's not a new tax that violates Prop. 218, then what is it? Well, when you give someone a contract and they kick back money to you for the award of the contract that was not in the bid request, that actually has a name. It's called graft. Then the question is, was this graft demanded or was it offered? That is the difference between extortion and bribery. Remember, this contract was voted on not once, but twice by the city council majority. The first time, the Superior Court judge ruled devoid. Then they changed the code so they could keep the contract and revoted to do so. So since we know this is not a sales tax, or your sales and use tax, since it is not collected by the only agency that's permitted to collect sales and use tax in the state of California, is Section 8.015 of the solid waste franchise agreement bribery of our elected officials that the Edgar majority voted for twice? Or is it extortion from our elected officials that the majority voted for twice? Or was it Mr. Edgar and his majority voting twice for a new tax on the people of the city in violation of Prop. 218? One last thought, and a request for clarification not related to this. At the last meeting, we were going to ask people what they wanted to spend the money on, and one of the items, actually two of the items, are now up for discussion to purchase at today's meeting. Did I miss the poll of the people, or we just not care what they want and doing what you guys want anyways? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else for oral communication? If not, I'm going to go ahead and move on. Register major expenditures.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Graham Mejia?
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor Protempo?
Aye.
Mayor Edgar?
Aye. Next up is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar can be acted upon by one motion unless the council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull any of the items?
Yes, Mayor, if you give me just a moment, I'll...it's standard. I'd like to pull the meeting minutes, so that would be 8A.
Okay.
And I'd like, what is it, the treasurer, city treasurer, and then D as well, so D and E.
Okay.
Make a motion to move the remainder if there are no other objections.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? First up, Jerry, you pulled the approval of the minutes, item 8A.
Yes, I just wanted to say, Wendy, I know you're doing a good job for us. It just seems like when I address the meeting minutes, for those of you who are not aware, we've gone from a action minute or a summary minute to an action minute, or Wendy, is that vice versa, summary minute. Summary is a little bit more inclusive of what happens at the meeting, so there's a little bit more of a dialogue that are in our written transcripts that move forward for future councils. We went to an action, which is very brief, and so unfortunately, as a rub to the rest of the council, I pull these each time to ask for their support, to go back to the minutes the way they were. There are very few things in here that will give a clear depiction of what is happening in the council meetings. And the items that I pulled last time that I wanted more information added to, that's insufficient. So I guess I would ask you, Mayor, or city manager, or city attorney, is there a way that when I pull items to have them made more inclusive of the statements that only I have made? Is it proper for me to reach out to the city clerk assistant at this point and have her review the tape with me and let her know the things that I'm looking to include? Is that a proper procedure?
Well, let me just ask this. So any of us can pull the meeting minutes. Usually, when you do, they get modified. And Angie, do you send the meeting minutes to the person that pulled them to see if it properly captures what they'd hoped to be in there?
No.
Yeah, I think that that's appropriate.
Okay.
So I don't have any issue with that unless anybody else in the council does.
All right. And if you don't, then that would be a good process so that I don't have to readdress her at the meeting and we can move forward, not, you know, having to delay the process. And I'll just go ahead and pass it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the minutes? I'll make a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
No.
Abstain. Okay. 4-1. Okay. Next up is item 8D, disposal of surplus equipment. Councilmember Kusamoto?
Sure, I'd like to hear the staff report on this.
Angie.
Thank you, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our municipal code allows us to dispose of our property as long as we declare it surplus first. Right now, we've got a backlog of a few vehicles and some computer equipment that we combined into this one staff report in order to declare surplus and send to auction. We're hoping to realize about $10,000 in revenue off the sale of these items, and that concludes the staff report.
So my questions are on the two vehicles, the Kelly Blue Book value. Is there something unusually bad about these cars? The values are so low?
Are you talking about the 2005 and 2007?
Oh, I guess there's three cars, but the Tahoe, for instance, that one, it seems like the value is abnormally low for a Kelly Blue Book valuation.
I'm going to let Tony address the Tahoe, but while I have the mic, I'll address the Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicle. Has definitely run its course of use and has a very low value in resale.
Okay.
Tony, can you address the Tahoe?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. These values are below the Kelly Blue Book. I tried to put in a realistic value because this is sold at auction. You're not going to see the exact Kelly Blue Book value come back to you. You're going to see usually two-thirds to half of what the Kelly Blue Book value would be listed on the Internet.
Okay. But Kelly Blue Book, I just did a quick look at that, and they're over-doubled the valuation of this, so this is kind of consistent with what you're thinking?
Right, right. In the past two years, with the economy being down, we're just not getting the Kelly Blue Book value at auction, and I wanted to show a realistic value for you.
Okay, so these are...okay, so it's somewhat misleading to me when it says Kelly Blue Book, but you're really just saying what might be realized in the sale through the auction process?
Right.
Okay, okay. And then, so this is something that would be consistent with the experience?
Exactly.
That you've had. But is there anything unusually bad about these cars? I mean, I understand about the police pursuit vehicle.
No, actually, the police pursuit vehicles, the Tahoe has, you know, it's over 125,000 miles, and those are all police miles on it. So you realize some value, but...
I understand. No, okay, that's my question. Yeah, high miles and it's used on patrol. Okay, that was my question.
Okay.
With that, back to you, Mayor.
Great. Anybody have any other questions on that? Okay, I'm going to look for a motion.
Make a motion to move.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Or abstain? Okay. Next up, item 8E, Resolution 2012-19, Designation of Interim City Treasurer. Councilmember Kusamoto?
Again, I'd like the staff report on this.
Sure. City manager?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have, as you know, we have an interim finance director, Linda Magnusson. And at this time, we are looking to appoint an interim city treasurer, and it's recommended that the police chief be named as interim treasurer.
Okay, so questions that I have. This is a new position we haven't filled in quite a while, right? I think this is somewhat new, to my recollection. What was the last treasurer we had?
Anita Agarante, the former...
She's not a treasurer. She's the finance director. The treasurer reports to the city council, which we appoint. And so when I look at this, I'm thinking, I didn't realize that we were looking to appoint a treasurer or an interim treasurer. Let's per the city code.
The...someone needs to function as the city treasurer in that capacity. It's not a new position. We're not adding anything.
Oh, no, I understand. But it hasn't been fulfilled in, to my, I'll say, you know, memory for the last few years, so this is something new for us. The treasurer reports to the...the city treasurer reports to the city council, much like you do, much like the city clerk would report, and as well as city attorney. We haven't had that before. Under Jeff's watch, we didn't have a treasurer, so that's why I bring this up.
And our interim finance director has brought that up to us, that it was an oversight in past years, and that we need to name a city treasurer.
Okay, because...okay, so I did specifically ask the former city manager about this, and he said, no, that's...in the way he manages the corporation called the city, he didn't need the treasurer, so...because again, it was a question of reporting, the lines of authority. So perhaps if we can ask the interim city finance director about the experience about this. Again, this is new, so that's why I'm asking about this.
Yes, Mayor and city council, it's been my experience through the years that in many cities, the code states that the city manager is city treasurer unless appointed differently. However, your city charter states that the city council is to appoint a finance direct...I mean, a city treasurer. And whenever I came on board, that was one of the things I wanted to do, was to make the change so that we had, you know, the correct assignment, so to speak, of a treasurer. And in my research, you know, I didn't find that there had been one appointed, you know, in recent years. So according to the state code, there are very specific things that the city treasurer should be doing, including, you know, approving expenditure of funds and receipt of funds and that sort of thing. And I just felt that it would be proper for the city to appoint an interim treasurer until such time as someone is on board on a consistent basis or on a permanent basis.
So...okay, so you're making a decision to have us create a position that we haven't fulfilled before that would presumably be filled by a salaried person down the road? Is that kind of how I understand where we're going with this?
Yes. It's not necessarily an additional body, so to speak. It's just assigning the treasurer duties to an individual that's on staff.
Okay, so I thought I heard you say something until that position's fulfilled, so I'm still kind of...
Well, it's...at this time, I'm the interim finance director. There's no one in the finance department that is there on a permanent basis necessarily that would fulfill those functions.
Okay, so I think in the case of the position of the treasurer, I think it was something that probably should have been brought to this body before it got brought out here as a consent calendar item. So I would like Mr. Mayor to have this thing sent back to the staff and have us look at that. Perhaps that'd be something we want to discuss either out here or in closed session, because I think it does involve hiring a person eventually down the road, which will be payroll, retirement, benefits, and the like. Because again, clearly, in the city code, the treasurer reports to us, not to the city manager, not to the city attorney, not the city clerk.
Okay. Councilmember Kusamoto, let me see if there's anybody else that has any input on that, and then we'll go from there. Who would like to go next?
I will.
Go ahead.
I was unaware that Jeff was...our past city manager was not, had not been appointed treasurer. But in the past, I know that our city manager, Dominguez, had been appointed treasurer. And in all the tenure that I have been on the council, it usually has been the city manager that is the treasurer, or there were some times when it was the finance director that was the treasurer. But we have never had a specific paid person for that position. And I really, myself, I don't think it's necessary. I think that having either the finance director when we hire one full-time, or the city manager, or the chief would be fine.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens or Councilmember Mejia?
I'll go. I just would like an opportunity to look into this a little further. I don't know that I'm opposed or supporting of it. I just would like to do a little bit more research, do maybe a benchmark on my own. Mayor, I just wanted to bring to your attention that there seems to be a problem. This is not being broadcast to the community, so I'm not sure if it's your wishes that we take a break for a few minutes until Doug can work that out so the community can view the meeting, or if you want to go forward. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Let me ask, is it being recorded? It's just not being broadcast?
I don't know. Doug realized...I brought it to his attention, and he jumped up and left the room, so...
...for a couple days, not being broadcast, with like a mic. Really fine.
Okay.
We're singling you out.
Yeah. Let me just ask Doug...
Oh, there he is back. He's back.
Yeah, it's recorded. It's being recorded, but it wasn't...
Okay.
So is it being broadcast now? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Doug. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, no, not a problem. Okay. So kind of coming back to the city treasurer thing, once we fix the TV problem. Couple items. You know, historically, this is an item that I'm pretty familiar with. So the treasury function within the city has some very specific responsibilities. And I'll just start, Warren, just to go with you, as I think it's a good idea to go take a deeper look at it, so I'm there. But just a historical perspective, we've always looked at this role as being one that we've always kind of kept with the city manager. We've had some turnover in the finance position over the years, and it does serve a very important purpose, especially on the warrants, but it also serves a very important purpose on our reserves and what we do with our investments of about $9 to $10 million in what we call our life fund. We had earlier, about nine months ago, we took on the investment policy within the city, and a big important component of that investment policy is that it has to be administered by the treasury position or the treasurer. And so at that point, you know, we had some concerns there, too, that we wanted to make sure that Anita was qualified to be in that role and that she was qualified to be able to have further training if required. I think historically, too, from my perspective, the city has always appointed the city manager. Warren's absolutely correct that our charter requires that it is an appointed position from the council, but from every year that I've been watching this and been a part of it, we've always used that as kind of an adjunct function that was usually either pasted on top of the city manager job or the director of finance. So, you know, with all that being said, I'm supportive of Councilmember Kusamoto's perspective, and I guess, Warren, I'd let you make a motion and what you'd like to do going forward on this.
Certainly. I'd move that we table this for the time being and have it brought back to us for further discussion deliberation.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. We're going to go ahead and go to discussion items. Now, we're at the end of the consent calendar, and as requested by Councilmember Mejia, I'm going to go ahead and move the agenda around a little bit. So instead of going into discussion item 9A, which was a consolidated disposal, public education, I'm going to go ahead and move up an item, which is item 9E, revisiting the modification of various intersections along Cattell Avenue... Cotella Avenue. We have a little bit of an issue with this one at this point, I know that Councilor, Mayor Pro Tempo, has been going through a process to participate with this item, she was checking some of her conflicts potentially with the FPPC. The FPPC is a regulatory arm of the state government that basically goes and makes sure that people that are on councils don't have a conflict of interest when they vote on something or participate in the process. Out of respect, I'd just like to get a quick report, because we may not be able to have Marilyn be a part of this at this point, or we, at this point, I really wanted to make sure, and I'd asked specifically when this item was agendized, I wanted to find out where you are with the conflict evaluation.
Well, if you're going to go ahead with this this evening, I will have to recuse myself.
Okay, so, but as the FPPC come back, they have not made any determination, they're still...
Not yet.
Okay.
It's still pending.
Okay, what I would like to do with this item then, since it's still pending, and Marilyn can't be participating in this at this point, I'd like to go ahead and pull this item for now, and we'll revisit this as soon as we get a ruling back from the FPPC.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation, if you might, maybe we move forward with it just for the comment from the community to see where they stand, that way we have a baseline of what the mood is with...
Well, I'll have to recuse myself.
Yeah, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and pull it completely, and...
You've got a lot of people that came to speak on this item, I just think you should let them speak.
Like I said...
If they're going to speak, I have to leave.
I'm not saying we have to take any action on this, I just think we should give them the opportunity, they've taken the time to come down and let us know how they feel.
Can't hear it.
I think, you know, we could have known this information far before, and they could have been contacted and told that they didn't have to come. I did call today, you know, to see if the item had been pulled, as you and I had talked about, and couldn't get any, like, for sure information, so.
Okay, well, Marilyn, when did we get the final determination on the FPPC, or lack thereof?
I don't know.
I mean, did you find out today that you weren't going to be able to participate, or was that the ruling that we've been, that you're waiting on?
We haven't gotten the ruling yet.
Okay.
So I cannot participate, and I would not be able to hear the comments, I'll have to recuse myself at this time.
Right. I'm just asking, Mayor, that you give these people, since they've taken the time out of their days to come down, give them the opportunity to speak, let the council know what their feeling is on the issue, and then we have to take no action, that's fine, I don't, I'm not looking to address the item, I just want them to be heard, that's all.
Okay, let me go ahead and ask with the rest of the City Council members, if, I mean, if we go forward, Marilyn's not going to be able to participate, does anybody have any preference on this?
There can't, I would...
I know what Jerry's perspective is.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so this is recorded, so Mayor Pro Tempo will have the opportunity to go and listen to the oral comments from the members of the public, and there is a TV in the back, she can go and listen to that, I believe that's okay, unless she's not allowed to hear.
I don't think so.
She does need to recuse herself and leave the dais.
But she's not allowed to hear, she can hear what goes on.
She can hear what goes on in the back, but she cannot influence or participate in any decision.
Right.
If there is one, there may not be.
Yeah, and that's not my intent.
Would that interfere when it's brought back with a decision that she has to make?
No, provided that the council member that recuses him or herself familiarizes herself with what occurred at the meeting where she was absent, so she can either watch the tape, she can look at minutes, that kind of thing, her, she can, she has opportunity to sort of make that up by watching the material, and then she can have that in her mind later.
Mayor, the only reason I ask is because when you and I discussed this item, you asked me to reach out to the people who were involved, who would be affected, I did that. I tried to contact you back, I know you're very busy, I know you've got a lot of stuff going on, but I never heard back from you, I called today, doing my due diligence, to see if Angie had any knowledge of what was happening, she tried her best, she said she didn't know, you know, what was going to happen, so I told them, yeah, you might want to go ahead and come down, because this is something they feel very strongly about, I think at the very least, we owe them the right to speak, even if we don't take any action, which is not my intent, and I will give you my word, that I'm not looking to take any kind of vote on anything.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, Marilyn, go ahead and recuse yourself from this, we'll go ahead and take public comment.
Yes, I'd go ahead and state why.
I need to recuse myself because there is a conflict of interest.
Well, I think that what you're doing is, there's a potential conflict of interest, you haven't resolved whether it's actual or not, and out of an abundance of caution, you're recusing yourself.
Right, thank you.
But doesn't she have to state her conflict? I mean, we've been told in the past, we have to state what our conflict is.
You can state your potential conflict.
Potential conflict is to do with one portion of this item in, where my house is located, in respect to Enterprise.
Okay, thank you.
Troy, what about, they've asked me to ask if Ken is conflicted out because of the 24-hour fitness issue.
Well, I think if he was, he would recuse himself, I think...
Well, he recused himself last time, so I just, I'm trying to find out if we can get some information as to why he no longer feels conflicted.
Well, let me just back up, so let's worry about ourselves, if a council member wants to conflict out, that's their choice, at this point, Ken, unless you have anything to add to this, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and open this item up for public comment, and then we're going to go ahead and move on.
Okay, great, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Very short staff report, and then we'll go ahead and open up, just so everybody in the audience knows what we're talking about.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, during our last meeting on October, August 20th, council requested Cotella Avenue intersection modifications be placed on a future agenda for reconsideration. The intersections were previously subject of a July 18th meeting in 2011. In writing the staff report, what our desire was is to obtain council's permission to re-enter into negotiations with all parties towards amending a settlement agreement that was previously entered into, to remove the restrictions at Lexington, that would allow the Cotella, that would allow traffic to cross Cotella Avenue southbound, would allow the eastbound Cotella Avenue left-hand turn lane into the 24-hour fitness parking lot, and authorize the city engineer to issue an encroachment permit to Cottonwood to remove the existing signal at Cotella and Cottonwood at the church's expense, and install a new signal at Cotella and Enterprise, with the funding to be determined by parties in the future. All sequel-related items and compliance would be the responsibility of the City of Cypress, and the City of Cypress would be taking the lead on drafting any amendments to the agreement, and that's what was proposed tonight, is to, was to simply direct the City Manager to begin those negotiations with those parties, to see if there is any merit in entering into these discussions. If the City Manager was able to achieve that, she would then bring a draft agreement back to the City Council that would amend the old settlement agreement, and that was what was on the agenda tonight, not a settlement agreement, we're not there yet, this is giving the City Manager the authority to go work on a settlement agreement.
Great, thank you. So let's just be clear, tonight, I'm going to go ahead and then, we're going to take public comment as courtesy to Councilmember Graham Mahia, I'm not going to open this up back to the dais for editorial, and please respect the fact, we're going to give you guys your five minutes each, love to have your comments and feedback, and then after the last person's done, I'm going to go ahead and close this, and we're going to move on, okay? So first person like to come up, I've got cards, and I'll keep Mr. Feldman on top, because he keeps looking up here like he wants to come right away. Rob, it's all yours. Yeah. He wore a tie, too, I like that, thank you.
That was from being in temple all day, you guys, so. Good evening, Councilmembers, like to, since you do know me, I'll reintroduce myself again, I haven't been up here in a long time, I'm Rob Feldman, I live at 11162 Bennington Street in Los Alamos, the New Dutch Haven tract, the last tract that was built in Los Alamos in 1963, and my favorite, because I lived there. So I also want to thank you all, we don't always agree, we will not always agree, so I do, in my comments, try to be as respectful as I can, we all know each other, and hopefully we can respect, and I was kind of blindsided by what is going on here, so coming here, number one, why do we even remotely want to go back to Cypress? I feel there's absolutely, positively, no redeeming feature or facts for the City of Los Alamos to reopen that agreement. We spent many, not days, not weeks, many years, we were part of the Neighborhood Action Committee of Los Alamos, I sat with the Cottonwood Church, I sat with you all up here, and we were brought in on the discussion, to look at the recommendation to re-enter negotiations for the City of Cypress and Cottonwood Church. Again, let's really go back to, Cottonwood has not really lived up to its part of the bargain, and for that matter, neither has Arrowhead, the two lanes should have been four from original, we never should have had the stop signs, but that's not my issue tonight. Number, one of the issues is, when you look at the signal, the Cottonwood way, the fact that it is demand, I love it, that's great, it does, nobody has complained, nobody's even remotely said boo. Being a signal on Enterprise, you all, oh my gosh, we already have a ton of traffic that comes through Bennington to come over to the base, or come anywhere over, I can imagine what's going to be floating through our neighborhood, especially Carrier Row, that is also, and then, let's really chat about the 24-hour fitness, the left turn, the people, I go to the 24-hour fitness, I've been going there for many years, I see you guys there all the time, no question about it, but I'm telling you, even the people in the parking lot don't know how to drive, and we think that if we put a left-hand turn lane, oh my gosh, the people coming off the line from Siboney on Cotella to where that would be, they're hauling already, that's the best word I could use, there's nothing wrong with the two lanes, the one lane where they make the turn, or they turn left into the racetrack and turn left again, we seem to have no issue. Again, I come back to you, you guys, we have an agreement in place, and all of a sudden, we want to go to the City of Cypress to get, to re-enter negotiation, so they pay for a few thousand bucks. I am passionate about our city, I love that our city does work together, I'm sorry sometimes, the City of Cypress loves to try to bully us, I'm tired of it all the time, just because they have 50,000 residents and we only have 12,000, so we need to concentrate on the election that's coming up in the next month and a half, those four people that are running, because it's going to change the City Council, regardless of what I feel, that's what we need to concentrate on, and I implore upon you all, if you do enter in this kind of negotiation, again, you bring in somebody who's in the neighborhood, who's lived there for 23 years, who knows the area, who's in, and this is not, oh God, I'm in real estate, so I know what the traffic is, I know what the people that live, we know what they, what we need to do, and based on that, that will allow us to have a say-so. We entrust you, there's no question about it, but going back to how contentious the original negotiations between Cottonwood, Cypress, and the City of Los Alamos, it took years to get it to a level that it is today, let's keep it there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Johanna Schluter. Johanna?
My name is Johanna Schluter, and I'm a resident of 4642 Howard Avenue, which is between Enterprise and Lexington, on the south side of the street. The development of the Cypress Golf Club property...
Hey, Johanna? Could you pull the mic down?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
I'm seeing some people, they're saying they can't hear you in the back.
Oops.
Or pull it off, either way.
Yeah, I'll just hold it. There we go, is that better?
Very good, thank you.
The development of the Cypress Golf Club and the Cottonwood Church property at Walker and Cotella came to us a long time ago, and I know that there were several lawsuits, and arduous meetings, and arbitrary decisions were made, and accusations were made, and finally, Cypress swapped the property that Cottonwood had with the property that the City of Cypress had, the golf course, and the Cottonwood Church went in across the street from Carrier Row. We defended our right then to have our community, our neighborhood protected from the traffic that would be entering and leaving the Cottonwood Church. Do you think that more development on, along Cotella is going to make it better for us? Certainly not, I don't think that there's anything to be said as a benefit to the residents of the neighborhood if you were to put a traffic light at Enterprise, if you were to allow the straight-through traffic from Lexington across Cotella. Lexington is, in fact, between Cotella and the base, a residential street, our streets are not paved for heavy traffic, if you put another signal light in at Enterprise and allow traffic to come through on a light, then you're going to have serious expenses when it comes to repaving the street, and you're going to be doing it a lot more often. There's no benefit to us at all, and the benefit that I see is for the City of Cypress, and we are the City of Los Alamos, we in the neighborhood are going to stand our ground, leave us out of your political dance with Cypress, we don't, we don't need to get involved in that, you should be looking to improve Los Alamos, not Cypress, that's why we elected you, to represent us, the City of Los Alamos. And long-term implications of what you have outlined for the neighborhood are increased traffic, which brings increased noise, increased dirt, increased danger to children and pets, a decrease in property values, and I'm sure that Mr. Feldman will bear me out on this one, that will be followed by a refusal of banks to loan money for property renovations and new construction, in what would, for all intents and purposes, become a blighted area. Be careful what you ask for.
Thank you. Tom Hefferton?
Von Hofgren.
Yeah.
Or Hefferman, whatever.
Hi, I'm Tom Von Hofgren, I live at 4702 Howard Avenue, I got the petition, since you told Jerry to come down and ask us last week what we thought, and depending on what we thought, because of his exclusion, because it's, I don't know how he's sitting here, and Marilyn's living right one block away, let us know, if they say no, we won't even waste their time in our time, and she came back and told you, no, and so you put it on the agenda Thursday, gave us no time, could actually have voted on it tonight, I guess none of us showed up. For what, for Cypress? You didn't do any of this for us, I'm curious as to your motivation, I haven't even looked at my notes yet. Oh yeah, I wanted to thank you for doing that, because I got to walk this hot weekend and get signatures. Personally, I want to thank you for that pleasure I got, because somehow I was the only one that got the petition, so I got to do all the sweat, thank you. Simple things, I don't talk as well as they do, I'm the loud guy, I get flustered, but it is the way it is, because I live down at the end of Enterprise and Howard, right on the corner, and it's coming around my corner, and we've already been here, done that, so you're insulting our intelligence to even bring this up, as if we forgot, and all, like a generation expired and died, and nobody forgot, this just happened, you're insulting our intelligence, straight up. What else can I tell you? Safety, if you want to go to safety later, should have thought about that before, we thought about safety, that's why we don't let them come in, we want to defuse everything we did, boom, boom, and then his line item, whatever, that really doesn't have anything to do with it, but he's here, what else have we got? I'm not good at this, sorry, but I'm pissed, because I walk the neighborhood. I thought I was represented by you, but evidently, that didn't work out so well, you're trying to jam this down our throats, thoughts that I had to jot down with no notice, typical, already did the insulting thing to our intelligence. We haven't forgot, we're going to fight, and our answer is no, no, and no. And I probably got another page, but I think you got the clue that the insult is insane. You're insulting us. It's really bad, and it's an election year.[611.82][611.82](APPLAUSE).
Okay, next card I got here is Sean Kilroy. Yeah. Yeah, the writing on these cards is pretty hard to read. Sorry about that.
My name is Sean Kirby. I live on Enterprise, so this street we're basically talking about. My family does not want the, the light at the end of the street. This will in no way benefit the citizens of Los Alamos. In fact, it will ruin the quality of our life. Please do not put the light at the end of the street. Thank you.
Thank you.[652.54][652.54](APPLAUSE). Let me go ahead and open it up. Outside of the blue cards is the only ones I have. Anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close this item off.
No, they're, they're coming up.
My name's Tom Olzuski. I've lived on Enterprise for 45, 44 years. And, you know, it's always been a nice, quiet street. You know, late of late, you know, the, the military traffic going through there has just really gotten dangerous. You know, opening it up through there, it makes no sense whatsoever. Not to mention all the military traffic we have speeding through there, I don't know why they won't obey the laws, but now you're going to put the church traffic on top of that? There's no way. I mean, I've seen kids almost get, get, you know, hit on that street, so please don't.
Thank you.[716.93][716.93](APPLAUSE).
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Jeff Hubert. I'm a 45-year resident, Los Alamos. I, I'm not here tonight as a firefighter of 26 years, I'm here as a resident. And I just need to make sure that everybody remembers what we're all here about. My family was in an auto accident in July, in which we were, we had a car make a left turn right in front of us at an uncontrolled intersection, just like what you're proposing tonight in front of the 24-hour fitness on the Cotella property. I want to make sure that that doesn't get built based on what my family went through, not just as a firefighter, but as a dad. Uncontrolled intersections don't work. I sat on the arbitration team that sat at this city hall when we sat down with Cottonwood, with the City of Los Alamos, and with the residents. I was representing the residents. I wrote a guest view in the news enterprise that talked about response times and what intersections do to hinder response times. I wrote that as a resident. When the City of Cypress went and showed that guest view to one of our chiefs, the chief at the time, our deputy chief, Patrick McIntosh, he basically backed up everything that I said, as far as what I stated about response times. I'm, I'm not going to pick this apart, because Mrs. Poe needs to hear this, and it's not officially on the agenda. But I did talk to my aunt, Sherry Poe, tonight, and she was livid at the fact that she was not notified of this. I have the LART agreement, and it states in here that you're to notify the residents if you're going to do anything involving the LART property. You haven't made proper notification. So I'd like to see that done, if you're going to properly and legally agendize this, and then I'll come back and talk point by point about what needs to be talked about. Thank you.
Thank you.[855.00][855.00](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Art DeBolt. I'm a resident of Los Alamos. Just a little bit of the history of, of the, the site up there. In the late 1980s or early 1990s, Cypress had a specific plan for the racetrack property that called for hotel, restaurant, and commercial office uses along Cotella from Walker to the Marriott Hotel. At that time, there was no retail allocated for Cotella, believe it or not. The retail was to be on the northeast corner of Cerritos and Walker, or the northeast corner of the property at Cerritos and Walker. That specific plan, back in those days, was the subject of the original traffic mitigation agreement, which called for Cypress to pay Los Alamos, and I, I'm not sure exactly, I don't recall exactly what the number was, it was either 10,000 or 20,000 a year for 15 years, plus a one-time $1 per square foot payment for each building that was built in the racetrack area. Cypress amended that specific plan in the late 90s or early 2000s to allow for the retail uses along Cotella, as Costco had expressed an interest in the Walker-Cotella corner that at the time was owned by Cottonwood. Cypress did not get the approval of Los Alamos for that amendment, according to the traffic agreement. And according to that agreement, mitigation agreement, that was a material breach. The city council at that time, and I was on that council and in the minority, failed, or actually refused to challenge the Cypress amendment and the breach, thereby allowing the retail development to proceed without a modification to the traffic mitigation agreement that would have compensated Los Alamos for the increased traffic. And as an aside, that's the same amended plan that the City of Cypress used or tried to use in their attempt to seize the land owned by Cottonwood Christian Center and give it to Costco. Cypress lost that case when a federal judge, Carter, ruled in Cottonwood's favor that the city had not followed their own specific plan. Kind of sounds familiar. The current specific plan, the one they're operating under right now, calls for designated number of access points along Cotella Avenue, okay, into the area. Some of them with signals and some of them without signals. Enterprise is one of those access points, but it's an access point without a signal. That access point, everybody's concerned about possible traffic from Cottonwood, I think that's a little misdirected. The access point is actually the gateway to the interior of that, the remaining racetrack property, everything behind the Marriott, all back in that area back there. Enterprise is the access point in that original plan. And when they do that, they need that light to facilitate the future development of those interior parcels, as well as the remaining ones along Cotella. You know, you guys owe it, flat-out owe it, to the residents of Carrier Row specifically, to make sure that they are not any more impacted than what they are right now. And that's you as a body, on, as a result of the prior councils being too timid and too, I'd just say gutless, in trying to work or trying to protect the citizens of Cypress from the very beginning on the development that's going on down there. You owe it to the people in Carrier Row. Thank you.[1078.28][1078.28](APPLAUSE).
Next up?
Hi, I'm Paul Stevens. What I was concerned about was, last couple of weeks, I've been seeing construction on that side of the street, on the church side, from Lexington to the church signal to Enterprise Street, which they've been tunneling underneath and putting traffic vaults. So they've already, are putting wires underground for signals for Enterprise. If you go over there right now, you can see it says "traffic vaults," and those were just put in within the last, you know, week. And it concerns me that, why is Cypress doing this, and we haven't even decided that it's going to be okay to do this? So it's just concerning to me that they're already putting wires in the ground for a signal there, so.
Thank you.[1133.97][1133.97](APPLAUSE).
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Randy Parker from Bunker Hill. I guess, I want to first start off by some of the past projects, one of them being the smart street that we have. I got to be honest with you, it's about the dumbest street I can think of. I can't get from Lexington past Noel without stopping at a red light. Fortunately, I ride my bike to work now, every day, and I commute regularly. I ride 175 miles a weekend on a Saturday or Sunday. And to comment to some of the people's comments about the drivers going to the base, there are some pinch points in Laguna, down PCH, where it's a little hazardous on a bicycle, there's no bike lanes. I don't want to talk about the fact that there's no bike lanes in Los Alamos, but when I come home, probably one of the worst streets that I come down is Farquhar between the Boulevard and Lexington. And every time that somebody comes by me, and they're way too close to me, they don't bother moving over a little bit when there's nobody in the oncoming traffic, I, I say to myself, I know where that guy's going, he's going to the base. And about 95% of the time, I'm absolutely right. I had a guy come at me head-on, he was passing, came in the other lane, as I'm riding my bicycle towards him, and he pulled right around, he was trying to pass somebody on Farquhar, coming right at me. I yielded, okay? Although I had the right-of-way, I yielded. Guess where he was coming from? The base. So there are people that go to the base, I don't care for their driving, so I'd hate to see them coming down my neighbor's streets. So that's my concern, you know, there's, just several years ago, we asked for controlling, mitigating traffic, and the board came out and did some things. Well, unfortunately, we asked them to keep the neighbor, keep people out of our neighborhoods. Well, it didn't work. We've got, now I have a bunch of stop signs at the end of Bunker Hill, Lexing, or Bunker Hill, Enterprise, and all these signs that nobody stops at, never did, never will, unless you're sitting there at the corner. But, but it just, you know, that's one of the past projects. Another past project was, and I have to say it did a great job, and that is when we built that barrier wall between Ticonderoga and Bunker Hill. You know, was this, it was a safety wall, and Cypress, a lot of money that Cypress had given to us was used to build that wall. And I really appreciate the council putting that wall in and doing all that design work. Unfortunately, our good friends, once they realized that we didn't use it to benefit them, they turned around and withheld the payment. And I myself went with several other Los Alamos residents down to the city council of Cypress and raised our issues, and a few months later, they paid us the money that they owed us. So my last comment is, when they built the Marriott in front of our house there, one of the members of the city council of Cypress, Mike McGill, taught me a new term I had never heard before. He said, "Nimby." I said, "Nimby? What the heck is that?" He said, "Not in my backyard, Randy." Says, "Nobody wants a Marriott in their backyard. Nobody wants any of those things in their backyard." So I say to you tonight, if I were standing in front of the Cypress city council, and if all these people behind me were Cypress residents that lived in this neighborhood, Enterprise and so on, you know what they'd be saying to you folks? "Nimby, don't put that in my backyard." And that's what Cypress residents would say. Thank you.[1333.53][1333.53](APPLAUSE).
Okay.
Good evening, Jody Schloss. I don't, I don't live in Carrier Row, I live in the Highlands. What happens in Carrier Row doesn't directly affect me, but it indirectly affects me. And I do travel on Cotella, so I wanted to speak on this issue tonight, because, first of all, I didn't understand, when I looked at the agenda and I saw what the agenda said, that you were going to talk about it and give the city manager permission to go and do some negotiation. First, first thing I thought of was why, why you didn't notify any of the residents that live in Carrier Row that would be directly affected by this. I don't, I don't think it's fair to them, and because of the issue that went on before, when all of this was planned out, I think you owe it to them. I agree with Mr. Hubert, what he said about turning left into the 24-hour fitness. A turn there is, not only is it, it's just insane. I, I would never do that, because when you go to a city, especially a city that has been doing redevelopment, or a newer city, be it Irvine, or Newport, or somewhere like that, you have to drive for miles before you can make a turn into a shopping center. You cannot make a turn into a shopping, you have to turn at a street and then enter the shopping center. Anywhere you go, you have to drive and drive and drive to be able to make a U-turn. And there's a reason for that. In fact, I think it's been, you know, proven that right turns, right turns, right turns are safer than left turns. But to make a left turn without a light, I just think is very unsafe. You know, people that are coming from the starting gate or going to the starting gate that don't want to park there or can't park there, there's crazy things that happen over there. So that, it, that should just be completely taken off the table. There should be no left turn pocket. It should just be at a light. Everything should be at a light, because that's the safest way to do it. And then, the traffic, we, we can't really tell Cypress what to do with their properties. We can't tell them how many lights to have in their city. We couldn't tell Seal Beach, and where I live by the Highlands, now, it takes three times longer to get over to Seal Beach than it used to because of all the lights. Los Alamos doesn't need any more lights, there doesn't need to be a light at Enterprise. We have as many lights as we need, and so to make the traffic flow smoothly. I mean, your day, my day consists of, before I even leave the house, I plan exactly where I'm going to go, and how I'm going to navigate through the city, and what time of the day is it? Are the kids in school? Am I going to go by the high school? Am I not? I mean, if you want to, if you want to do something good, good for the city, work with Cypress, to work with Long Beach and Caltrans, to get another ramp at Cerritos. Put, make it so that people can go down Cerritos, you know, especially now, everything is, everything is closed, all the intersect, not the intersections, but the, the ramps, like at Seal Beach Boulevard. Now, I just avoid that totally. I, I can't even go that way anymore. I have to go to the 605 to get on the 405. You know, it's, it's all very inconvenient. I know it's going to be good when it's done, but now, to go to jury duty, I had to go down, I couldn't go to get on the freeway at Seal Beach Boulevard, I had to go down Cotella. So I do use Cotella, even though I live on the other part of town, and I, I think you're doing a great disservice for even bringing this back to these people. It's just, it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you.[1556.95][1556.95](APPLAUSE).
JM Iveler, I live in Carrier Row. First, I'd like to thank Jerry for making sure that the voices of the community were heard tonight, rather than just forcing us all to come down here some on our holidays, so that we just turn around and go home. So thank you, Jerry. Thank you, council, for agreeing to finally do it. I was a member of the group of people, like Mr. Hubert, who participated in the negotiations. I noticed that one of our city council negotiators, Alice Jemse is here, and we are, we, we as a group were forever, or will be forever happy with the wonderful job she and Fred Freeman did, representing the interests of the community. She was absolutely phenomenal, fighting to make sure that our community stayed protected, and she truly did represent the interests of our Los Alamos community. When we negotiated, we negotiated in good faith with Cypress. When we just went back, initially when Jerry brought this up, she said that it was an unanticipated event happened, that people were turning left at the light and then right onto one of the streets in Carrier Row and using that for cutthroat. And that maybe we should consider just having the light go straight, and we should talk to Cypress about it. Well, there were two ends to the Lexington extension. Cypress was fighting to not have the traffic go straight through to Denny. That was part of their concern. So we said to Cypress, okay, here's what we'll do. You guys measure it, and if it ever gets above a certain rate, you can divert. And we'll keep ours diverted, because we actually are coming from a position of strength, and that's what we wanted to do. The trade-off here is pretty simple. They controlled Denny, we control Cotella, and we both do what we want, and we take away the fact that every year, I believe it is, according to contract, they have to go out and get the traffic measured, which costs them money, and we just wipe that out. And we both control our intersections that go into our cities. That's the deal. How the rest of this ended up there is because they think they have us over the barrel now, and it's time for them to get theirs. Well, it's not worth trading off, as you've been hearing tonight. We fought to protect the community. Giving a left turn pocket, when there are already two ways to make the turn safely, when an uncontrolled left turn pocket, as I'm sure our chief will tell you, is substantially more dangerous than a controlled light U-turn or a controlled left, makes no... And we'll keep ours diverted because we actually are coming from a position of strength, and that's what we wanted to do. The trade-off here is pretty simple. They controlled Denny. We control Cattella, and we both do what we want. And we take away the fact that every year, I believe it is according to contract, they have to go out and get the traffic measured, which costs them money, and we just wipe that out. And we both control our intersections that go into our cities. That's the deal. How the rest of this ended up there is because they think they have us over the barrel now, and it's time for them to get theirs. Well, it's not worth trading off, as you've been hearing tonight. We fought to protect the community. Giving a left turn pocket when there are already two ways to make the turn safely, when an uncontrolled left turn pocket, as I'm sure our chief will tell you, is substantially more dangerous than a controlled light U-turn or a controlled left, makes no sense. Putting the light at Enterprise, when that will create cut-through traffic and, as Art DeBolt pointed out, additional traffic beyond what's currently there at the church for all the people who are going to be in the, wherever the new, doing with the new development, is not right. And when we see the wires already going into the ground, and when we see somebody out there surveying a turn pocket last week, you've got to know, we think the deal's done and we are getting hosed. And that's why we all showed up tonight, because a lot of us already think the deal's been done. And we're afraid that unlike Fred Freeman and Alice Jemsa, this time, we're not being represented. This was killed once already in a botched vote, in which two people who actually had conflicts ended up voting on it. It shouldn't have come back, Mr. Edgar. It doesn't help us. It helps Cypress. They're the ones who are negotiating from strength. It isn't worth it. 20, 30 houses are being detrimentally affected, and we should do something to fix that. And the trade-off is there. They take control of Denny, and it goes through on Denny. We can take control of Lexington whether it goes through across Cattella. That's the trade-off. It's the only trade-off. It's a one-for-one, and it's fair. Anything else is selling out all the work done by all the residents who participated for all those many months in the negotiation, former councilman Fred Freeman and former councilwoman Alice Jemsa, who represented this city phenomenally well and represented the interests of this area phenomenally well. Thank you.
I live on Grooney Street, 4552. Putting that signal in, it's not the thing to do. And everybody's talking about the traffic from Cottonwood, and I don't think that's a problem. The problem is Cottonwood, they have a couple, I don't know, 15 minutes, a couple times a week, maybe four times a week of traffic. But it's that gateway that Art DeBolt was talking about that's going to open up all that new construction that's going to go on over there. And you guys are supposed to protect us. That's your job. And we have little kids in our neighborhood. Matter of fact, right next to me, three new houses, we have like five little kids, about five years old in there. It's already bad enough we've got people that shoot through to go to the base. And they're coming up Green, they're coming up Enterprise, but they come in, we're on those streets, and if you put a light in, we're going to get that many more people. We have nothing to gain by doing this for Cypress. Well, Troy, you might, because I think you're running for election, right? And maybe they're giving you a hand or something, I don't know. But I really don't know why this came back up, except for maybe that's a reason. I ask that you stop it, Troy. We've got little kids in the neighborhood, Cypress. They could get the traffic over to either Walker or take it down to Cerritos, but their whole objective the whole time is shove down to Los Al. Let us deal with the traffic issues. It's already a mess. My job, I'm a traffic signal supervisor. You guys know that. I was in Traffic Commission. So you guys didn't want to put me back up there. You didn't like my opinions. It's fine. That other thing you're talking about doing at 24-hour fitness, I could tell you right now, it's unsafe. You put an unprotected left turn out there, someone's going to get killed, and it will be on you. Other than that, I would ask that you guys should just take this off and never, we already had an agreement, and don't go back on it. Think of the kids. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. How are you doing, Javier?
Good.
Good to see you.
Mayor, City Council. I just, you know, I don't live in Carrier Row, but as a resident, a longtime resident of Los Alamos, I think that the protection that needs to be offered here is for the residents, number one, you know? Negotiating with the cities around us, I know is part of the deal as the council, but when you're elected by those people that come in here, that live in this community, that has to be the focus. I mean, it absolutely needs to be the focus. You need to step outside of your own agenda, step outside of your own thoughts and processes and say, what benefits the people, from the little ones to the elders? That's what you need to do every single day. And if you're not doing that, then something's wrong. You know, maybe it's a good idea that the hospital's expanding because we're going to have more fatalities right down the street, you know? It's a one-minute drive for the ambulance, but it just doesn't seem right. When we had that left turn into the starting gate, that was a headache. People just cutting through there, and you have a lot more traffic every day. There's more and more traffic on Cattella. You come through in the evening, and I mean, it is backed up all the way. You know what I mean? So it's going to be very difficult to get through there regardless of, you know? And people become very impatient, and they're going to force their way through, and they're going to do it while they're texting, and they're going to do all that, all that. And I mean, it's just a matter of time. Fatality will come. And not only do we need to protect the residents of our community, but the residents that are passing through our community as well. I mean, they're passing through Los Al, and you know, they could be from anywhere else. And I mean, that's just not something we want to be known for. We've got some pretty dark scar marks on our community already in the past, and I think that we need to really be careful moving forward and think about, you know, what we want this city to be known for. And protecting the residents just sounds pretty good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Robert Blank, Ranger Drive. I appreciate everyone's comments so far. And whether we live on Carrier Row or not, I just appreciate the comments. This is our community, and I feel like if we live in that neighborhood or not, we're together on that, and that means a lot. Again, I just found out about this as well. I don't believe we were notified as the due process calls for, but again, like it's been said, this has been negotiated. We fought hard for this. To even revisit it, shame on you for even revisiting this. We fought hard for this for a reason, and that hasn't changed. We have a history with the city of Cypress that they love to shove things down our throat, and it, again, does not benefit us. One thing I'd like to talk about, too, is the safety in the neighborhood. As it increases, yeah, we have a lot of military traffic that comes through. I get it down Rangers, we all do down the other streets. And if this is any kind of money deal or something, hey, let's start patrolling our neighborhood and start writing tickets to them. Military or not, it's really dangerous. I got 20 kids, 15 kids on my street that are five to 10 years old, and it's a matter of time. It's a matter of time. So even actually bringing this up to bring more traffic in, I think we need to be hard-nosed. I think you need to show us in good faith that you're for us, because really what it looks like to me as a resident of Carrier Row, that you don't give a damn what we think, and it's about them. That's the only motivation I see. So I just implore you to, this needs to be botched. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. I wanted to thank everybody for coming down here tonight. That's part of the process is to get community input, as the last speaker said, so I appreciate that. If there's no other speakers on this, I'm going to go ahead and move the agenda, and I'm going to ask for Mayor Pro Tempo to come back out from the back. City council members, you guys want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. We're going to adjourn. We'll be back in five minutes, about 7:30.